Hi, John. It's six thirty. Let's go ahead and start the City of Hillsborough City Commission meeting with the-
Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody, all the commissioners had a chance to take and read the minutes as well as the tax exempt minutes to look for any corrections that need to be done? If so, do I have a motion to take and approve the reading of the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes the motion. Do I have a second? Levi, seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Passes. Has all the commissioners had a chance to take a look at their bills and the paying of the bills? Levi moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike or Paul, whichever you want. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same? Presentation of the bills is approved. City Commissioner reports. Levi, let's start with you.
Do you have an explanation for that?
Well, it's full, but it's gonna take a while to get it cleaned up.
It's not sanitary, you're saying?
It's not sanitary. It did fly over the other end.
What a difference a couple of weeks make, huh?
Maybe. We'll see. We are looking for, we'll start opening up here this month for some lifeguards, we can get those lined up. We've got two that I believe that were for sure, and we may have a replacement for Kathy. We're still waiting to hear on that. And the rest will be on the agenda.
Thanks, Levi. Dave?
I have nothing tonight.
Mike? Okay. Paul?
I don't have much. I did visit with Brian, Paul, and things are going good for him, he said, enjoying it. That's going good. Cemetery, when it's set, water goes down and everything, you get it evaluated. I got set up with Simon and with Mike when they do get ready to go out there to kind of go through that, to get up to speed on that. The HEDC meeting, not a lot going on there. The biggest thing was, of course, the apartment complex. That was the, most of the conversation was about that, and they had the full support from the Hillsborough Economic Development for that project. And also, they did donate for the city tent, for the HBA tent also, so I thank them for that. And on electric, I'm still, I got a lot of information. Levi got me a lot of information from past years on that, and kind of getting up to speed with that and work more on that with Jim, and I think Jim is still working on my, for the electrical outage, we talked about that, so we haven't forgot about that, it's still in the works. So, that's all I have, it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, and I don't have anything new from my side either about the airport, and I think the finances and stuff are working well. Okay, moving on to the city officers. Jim?
One item. I met with seven, Kevin Sickich from Butler last week, and he gave me a quote on that reversible plow that Dave had brought up here. The quote is for twenty-seven-five-ninety-five. That's a couple thousand dollars more than when we talked previously this spring. And as of May first, there was another two-thousand-dollar increase. This was submitted last week, and it's good for two weeks, so he said that would be good. But, just, I don't know what you want to do, if you want to lock in, it's just gonna get worse, I think, so. And he said they might have one available, but he thought it was probably spoken for, and if we do this, we will hopefully see it by winter.
And what was the quote again, Jim?
Twenty-seven-five-ninety-five.
And that included the increase in the first of May then, too?
No.
It didn't?
No, if we don't, it'll be closer to thirty thousand.
Okay.
And this one could work on either loader or if we had to-
We need to work on getting the old loader coupled over so that all the equipment are interchangeable between both loaders.
Okay.
Is that included in the price to get it competitive?
No. And I haven't, he hasn't got me a quote for that yet.
Well, I personally think it'd speed up our snow removal with having the wings on it.
And, and the thing to do is eventually, eventually we would have had to do that, is get all of our equipment coupled so that either loader can run any piece of equipment.
Is the, is the old plow worth anything, or?
Yes, we're thinking, I look back to see how much we paid for it, and I'm thinking we can get what we paid for it. The way prices are, hopefully, so, maybe eight, ten thousand dollars.
Well, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion then to take and accept the quote?
I will make the motion to accept the quote for the new plow from Butler Machinery.
I'll second.
Butler, correct? Yep. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Levi, seconds. Any other discussion?
And this will be covered in that, what we had budgeted, right, because I thought we said thirty thousand.
And there's fifty, I looked before I came, there's fifty-five-seven in the equipment fund.
But we had allocated thirty thousand, I thought, in the budget just for trucks.
Right.
So we can use that instead of.
Either or, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Any yes for me?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. John?
Just quickly, late last week, I got a lease from Pat Mueller on the eighteen-eighty-one extraction, and total ag, and their lease is up to speed now in terms of what they need for the tax exemption for eighteen-eighty-one. So, I expect soon we'll see a new tax exemption application with lease attached, and they should be good to go this time around. That's it, Terry.
Okay, thank you, John. Moving on, Ashley?
All I have is that due to all the weather and everything, we have pushed back our cleanup day to May ninth. So it'll be May ninth instead of today.
We hope. Supposed to be a good weekend, next weekend, so. Okay, thank you, Ashley. Sheriff's Office, what do we have, anything?
Nothing.
Perfect. City Engineer, we don't have Steve tonight, so I know that there was some issues about the paving project, which we'll cover next, so. Dave, I'll take and turn it over to you.
I don't really have anything other than how are the handouts coming? I see you got the sheet here and all, so.
Sarah's been working on them. We got, I think she's got all the maps printed. I know she's been stuffing envelopes. And then I just want you guys to read what I have for a cover letter, and let me know if you want any changes, or if I am okay to put that in the packets to get them sent out.
And, you know, again, I think you talked to Jim too, but, you know, we're gonna have to do something with the streets before we get into the big ma- major project next year, so some of the streets are in pretty bad shape. So, I, I think Dave pushed out some information, and I kind of agree with him, Jim, that there's probably some, some streets that we'll have to give some priorities to this summer to kind of, and do we need to look at a contract to help you guys out at all, or?
I've got a contractor coming up. He said hopefully this week or next week, we were gonna look at those water, those winter digs that we did, and get those filled. And I was hoping he would go around with me, and we'd look at some areas and see if he can give us a quote on that.
Okay, good. Jim, can we, you know, if we're gonna have them come in, can we look them at, you know,
spend a little bit more money and have them do some, you know, pick out some of the worst spots? And like the, those big cracks along, you know, coming down Keldo and Ya Avenue? You know, if he could spray some tack and get, fill them with mix, and, you know, so it's not such a rough.
I think so. They're set up for that, and then I know there's a lot of areas around Valley Gutters that are getting real tough. We can, the ads, things on the edge, I think we could kind of hopefully wait on, but anything in the main driving lane and on Keldo, we can try and address those.
Yeah, and if we have, you know, if we have to dig in the little, you know, for a little bit more money to, you know, we gotta, we gotta start fixing some of this stuff, you know, if you need more of that.
Okay, I'll, I'll see what-
Well, let's get some prices and-
I'll see what he comes up with, and hopefully the next meeting I'll have some.
Great.
They haven't even started batching yet. It'll be a couple of weeks before they even start batching, so. So there's, can't get anybody in right now, so.
I suppose, I don't know, maybe some of those, do you think some of those are gonna have to be dug out, or?
I don't, I haven't seen any yet that need to.
Okay.
Like I said, if we address the areas where the water's been standing and the, the rains and the frost have been killing us. Anything we filled in already is blown out already, so.
And I realize, you know, that, you know, we're hoping we can get this, you know, twenty-three project going, but, and I hate to stick a whole bunch of money into it, but I think we're gonna have to try and get some of it fixed.
And you're talking over here yet before they even hit the streets?
Yeah, we got one more winter to run over them, and-
Yeah, we'll do what we can do, and-
Okay, I'll, I'll stop down and check with you and on and on, and-
Okay.
Things can-
It'll work.
Hey, thanks, Jim.
Along Fifth there is bad, too, that's breaking up on our, right out, kind of by our house?
Yeah.
That is really busting up.
And I know McDonald drives tough, too, after all those years of construction there.
When do we need to look at, Jim? Somewhat now, but somewhat in the future, if we're gonna try to keep up a little bit better, so we're not ending up this far down the road. Do we need to get some equipment or budget for the next few years? Is there anything that would work to help do some of the small stuff, so we're not ending up having to pay a big contractor to come in? You know, even if we have to get it used, I don't know what you'd want to use, we're not just using cold patch and the stuff to get by. Do we want to spend a little bit more and get the machines and then have another, do we plan for another summer employee to help do some of those things? Because now would be the time to start thinking about it, to work, where we can get it in the budget for the next few years. And the same thing with any other equipment. I know the guys that talked, with our cleanout pool, they said a jet back might be nice, or new jetter and back.
We've been talking about that for years. That'll, that would come in handy with the electric department, too.
Right, so it's some of that stuff that we need, maybe we need to start looking at that a little bit more serious, so. Even making a list, so we know, here's what we should look at.
Okay.
See if we can be a little bit more proactive.
If you need some kind of equipment, you know, in the future, just figure it out, bring it up, and we'll figure it out, you know. I know this stuff costs money, but the blacktop costs money, too.
But I resort back to it, you gotta remember that we can buy all the equipment in the world, but if we don't have time and guys to run it-
Correct, and, and I realize that, I do.
Summer is gonna explode here. We're gonna go right into summer, and it's just gonna-
Well, and that's the other thing, do we, as we do this, we find out, do we, we've added another person, but it, I think it's a lot more responsible as us as citizens or the community to hire an employee or two to help than try to pay, you know, as we found out, we're playing triple and quadruple what we normally would pay, because there's not enough employees, and there's too much work for our contractors to come in, so.
I guess I'd be more interested to find out what the contractor says, because that would come with the equipment, too.
See, and that's the thing, they're, they're set up for that, all that. And we're just, we were not set up to do, I mean, if you got a hot oil tack, a dis, oil distributor and, and something, a machine that'll hold the, keep the mix hot, and then you gotta have the time to do it, and then there's prep work, and, you know, so. There's a lot involved in it, not just running out with some bags of mix.
That might be a cheaper alternative for us if, instead of getting another employee, but it'll be interesting to take and do a comparison.
The other thing, too, is, you know, the subject of standing water comes up in the curb and gutter. Should we be budgeting, I don't know, you know, several thousands of feet of curb and gutter every year? We can do that, and eventually, you know, this, this curb was, was done when? In the eighties, you know, so it's, it's forty, fifty years old.
Yeah, it was in eighty-four, eighty-five?
And was all the curb done then? I don't even know.
No, I don't think all of it was done, but a lot of it was done.
No, so that curb has been there for a long time, and-
Most of that was done in the sixties.
There's areas that are fine, you have good drainage, but there's, there's so many that I just, and it's, you can't get the water to go uphill, so.
Well, that's, maybe we just need to prioritize and make a list of what we can start going down, so we can start doing some of those things, so we can figure out where we want to start.
So we don't have to spend twelve million every twenty hours.
Right. We gotta be a little bit more proactive instead of retro like we have.
Do we need to worry about all the gravel that's on eighty-one, where, I saw they got rock in today? But i- is that washing into our drains?
I don't know. That'll be, we'll get out there with the sweeper as soon as we can. We basically had to put the sweep, sweeper away and bring the snow equipment back out again, so, and once he gets out there, that's one of the priorities, to get out there and do that.
I hope the rock's out there, because that's a lot of gravel out there.
Yeah, I know.
Okay?
Trouble is, it's gonna be rock, right back out there again the first time it rains.
Yeah, I know, but, um, plants are, so.
You're exactly right. Okay, anything else on paving? We'll move on to the-
I need to know, is that letter good?
The only thing I would add is, if they want to email in, maybe you want to put the info on?
Email, okay.
Do we need a motion on that? Yeah, send it out?
It was, it was just kind of an FYI, and that way you guys can add anything, because it's gotta go out anyways, it was already approved with.
I'm good.
And looks good to me.
And Ashley?
Paul?
Yes.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Levi, you're okay with it?
Yep.
I just gotta add email.
And Mike, I'm assuming we didn't have a chance, you didn't have a chance to talk planning and zoning for that, so there's no update or?
No, no.
Okay?
It'll be coming next week, so.
So the beautification, Mike, you and Levi, on the next four, uh, items?
Uh, so I'm gonna skip around just a little bit, so we can. Two oh six Fourth Avenue Southeast. They were in eviction court on Wednesday last week, and so I think they got five days. So that we should see that property be getting cleaned up. Item six point five. The good news is that property has sold. Yes, so. So, uh, they are aware of in the disclosure, so hopefully, well, they told us who the new buyers are, they're out of California.
Yeah, uh, am I allowed to say them?
I believe so, it's public record once it changes.
Troy's-
Burn House?
Yep.
Yep, Troy Savageo and Michael Oldham, and their closing date is set for May ninth.
So, yeah, so that's good there, that should be cleaned up. Six point six, there's no updates there. And then six point four. So after last Wednesday, when we went over to finish cleaning up on the property, because it had not been completed, after Mike and I went over there and talked to him about it, there was kind of a miscommunication between the Sheriff's Department and I, and all of us, and so I had sent out the email that all of us, all of you are aware of. So this mor- or this afternoon, at three-thirty, there was a meeting with Charlie Stock and Sheriff Hunt, and Ashley was there, Mike was there, Adam Sheldon was there, and then I came a little bit later. And JR was also there. But, the conclusion that we came from that meeting, which was very good, is that their biggest concern was how do we move forward, and how far the Sheriff's Department could work, being that it, our end of it is kind of a civil matter. So their recommendation to us, and we and JR can fill in as needed, that basically from now on, when the Beautification Commission moves the, the tickets to us, at the same time that we approve and move on to move with our litigation, or our cleanup policies, is that we would also send it to the Sheriff's Department to be investigated for criminal and to be charged out that way through the state's attorney. So the motion that he, that Steve had asked for from us to make sure that we go through with that would be, I just want to get the numbers right. Because there's three properties that would fit into this criteria as of right now. So I would move that ticket number twenty-two-one-zero-zero-four, ticket number twenty-two-one-zero-zero-one, and ticket number twenty-two-one-zero-zero-three be forwarded on to the Sheriff's Department for criminal actions, criminal charges.
One thing Steve wanted to make, or Charlie actually asked us to let people know that a thousand-dollar fine per day-
Yes.
Will be starting to get added, once the criminal, once you guys agree that the criminal charges were able to go and pursue those, that could add on a thousand-dollar charge per day, correct, JR?
Correct, that's how we try to the criminal action.
You got the motion?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Where are the other two properties?
The other two properties would be three-eighteen Second Street Southeast, which is over by the Armory, and two-twenty-two Fourth Avenue Southeast, which is the same block over by the Armory.
Okay, got it, thank you.
What were those numbers, again on those two?
It's the twenty-two-one, one, two, and four. Yep, and then the four would be one oh five Fourth Street Northeast.
Could I get clarification on the thousand dollars, the fine for the criminal? When would that start? Is it when we show up at the property? Can you spell out exactly when that thousand-dollar criminal charge, that fee gets added on?
I'd refer this to Charlie Stock, but really, he'll find that's in violation the day he files it, or he goes through filing the complaint and summons it to court. And it's a thousand dollars per day, so, at least by the first day he files it, is the way I'd see it, but it's a daily fee. There is no cap to it either. But it'll be up to the state's attorney to decide how he charges that and how it gets sentenced. Up to it though, I just want to clarify.
And how does that impact the Beautification Committee?
For us, it does nothing, but it's giving us another avenue to get things cleaned up, with getting things orderly cleaned up.
So when the sheriff takes it over is when the thousand dollars start?
When the sheriff takes over and he forwards it to Charlie to, to actually charge the resident or the property owner.
So we'll have a, there'll be a criminal court proceeding, and then that's when it's figured out, and it starts at that point? Okay.
Because the biggest thing that Charlie and Steve had is that we're at a civil matter, so with that civil thing, with our civil, it's hard for them as a Sheriff's Department to go in and say that they're criminally doing something wrong. So now that we have both avenues, when, when there's that criminal action, it's, they can legally detain or hold that individual if they aren't allowing the cleanup process to happen.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion, the second, excuse me. Let's go ahead and vote, Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Anything else you want to cover, Levi, Mike?
Unless you guys want to allow the property owner, I see she is here tonight, for six point four to talk.
Sasha, you want to talk?
Um, I guess-
You have to come up to the podium.
Please.
There's just, um, been a, uh, I guess I, I'll just talk to Charlie Stock and see where you go from here with it all. I know that there's still a couple of big things that need to be moved. The one, uh, kids' shed or whatever in the driveway there, and the big trailer. I did back it up, so it wasn't costing the sidewalk, which was the biggest concern, I think, on it, too. So it's no longer over the sidewalk. And, uh, I guess, with, um, next door, that's all been taken care of and done. So there should be no worry there, and, um, just a few big things in the driveway really, yet, that gotta go. It's just been with the weather. You know, it's not just the county roads or township roads, it's getting in the yard, it's, you know, and that big heavy trailer.
Okay, so you're-
I'm trying to, you know, um, get it, get it all done and work with you guys, it's just been a couple of issues that, um, but there, as far as it being all cleaned up, the woodshed taken down, the other, the woodshed moved, you know, the neighbors next to me, my stuff on their property there, I mean, all that's been taken care of and done. So it's, it's just been a couple of big things.
Okay.
In the driveway, but the, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I feel, Levi, that the rest is, other than a couple, no?
From what Mike and I went over there and stopped and asked you to get up, get out of there, it still hasn't happened.
What's that?
What Mike and I were over there-
Yeah.
And we, what we told you needed to go-
Right.
That hasn't gone.
Ri- right, a couple of the big items, yes. But as far as like the cleanup itself, and with the neighbors, um, where are you at on that?
That would be up to the neighbor, as far as I, I haven't been able to check it out, because you were parking the driveway and in the alley, so I haven't went in there to look, but, you know, that's up to the neighbor to file complaints also.
Yeah?
What?
Have you talked to Monty?
And again, like I told you that day, you have to talk to Monty.
And I have.
You have to talk to the property owner.
She said it was, it was good, done. I thought she said she told you that, but I didn't know.
All, all she, I called to wish her happy birthday, and she said, she, she looked back there, and from what she could see, it looked like it was cleaned up, but she couldn't see if there was anything behind the garage. I don't know if there is or not, but she said what she could see, it was cleaned up.
Okay.
Other than that, I, I don't, I don't think she went back, and her daughter said she was gonna go back, I guess, and whether she did or not, I don't know.
So from the city perspective, it is now being transferred over to Charlie and as the state's attorney, basically, at this point?
Correct, but we'll still be working with both of them when it comes to the final cleanup, to make sure that everything is done.
So from here, do I, um, contact Stock, or, I mean, I guess there's a-
No.
My biggest thing is I just want to know that it's, other than the, the couple of big items in the driveway that need to be moved, is it, I mean, done, as far as that?
Sasha, I can't-
I guess I don't know what, what more you want me to do.
When, when we were-
Because I understand what you guys told me that need to be moved, yes, but if, if, is it cleaned up, I guess?
Until that stuff that we asked you to, to get done is done, it's not done. What Mike and I talked about, unless those things are gone and cleaned up and done, it, it's not done.
Okay, well, the-
And from this point-
The trailer and the shed are still in the driveway, but is it cleaned up enough for you guys?
I have not been by there for a while, so I can't say.
It's better? I can't say. At this point, Sasha, we've, we've tried working with you.
And I'm working with you, too.
That's incorrect. If you remember, you sat here two weeks ago and said that if you didn't have things done by the date that we said, you'd allow us to go in and clean up your property. That never happened.
And it has.
So now we are, you've got our hands tied, so now tomorrow morning, Ashley will make a call over to the Sheriff's Department,
Okay.
and the deputies, or Sheriff Hunt, will go in and investigate-
Okay.
And file charges, or will then send that to Charlie Stock, the state's attorney, and if he decides to file charges, he will file charges against you. And then you, like we said, could get a thousand dollars-
And then you, like we said, you could get a thousand dollars per day until it is completed.
But, okay, so say that the trailer and the shed are just gone, okay, how will I know from you that you're good with it?
When the trailer's gone, call us. Call City Hall, they will call us. We'll go over and look from there.
There you go.
Okay.
But remember, it's all the stuff that we asked you to move.
And.
Not necessarily move, get it out of the, out of there.
Well, I have, except for the two trailers and that.
Well, I hope you get the trailers moved so that it doesn't have to go to Charlie, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well then, after they're moved, I can just call you City Hall and?
She's gonna let us know.
And you'll come take a look at it? Is that how we're gonna do it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to make that Charlie and Steve had also talked about is that if we're finding things that are on public right of way or impeding traffic or anything, we do have the right to go in and move such things. And they'd stand behind that, so.
Is that included?
Alleyway and sidewalks.
Yep. Any public right of way.
And then for cleanup, would there be any impacts again? We got that coming up on the night, I assume that people can take and get it out on the berm and, and get rid of it that way too?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to the North Coast Community Foundation, any update?
No, no updates on that.
Railroad Park update?
Um, so I think most of you had seen the email that I forwarded on to you from what I had sent to the BNSF, the CEO of BNSF, the, um, JLL and the president or CEO of JLLL. And then I also gave you the response to look at that came back from Amy Macbeth. And so what basically she's asking is that we can get the process started, it's the six hundred dollars will get it started to move forward with everything. So I also filled out the application forms that have everything on it. I also want to thank Mr. Wright and Dave for finding an article from June twenty-first, nineteen twenty-nine, talking about the, the lease agreement that was being put in place at that time, so. And that was from, it was actually the park board that was putting that together, so. So hopefully, once we get moving forward this, we can get this lease figured out and be done with it. So with that, I move that we pay the six hundred dollars to BNSFF, BNSF, BNSF to start the lease agreement process.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other discuss, discussion? And I just wanted to, what if the status quo stayed the same and we didn't do anything? What would be the ramifications of that?
We couldn't change anything.
We couldn't add anything to the park, is what you're saying? And I just want to ask the commissioners, are we ready to do a project over there? Or are there other things that we want to take and make sure we got the investments Just playing devil's advocate here.
I don't see this as a necessarily the city of Hillsborough splitting the bill for this project, I see it as a community project and working with grants and other things, and it's a slow process, cause I went to see, you know, what it would cost to put up a fence and apparently seventy-four thousand dollars is what it costs to put up a fence for the whole distance along there. So it's gonna be a slow process and it's gonna be a vision, but in order, whether we do it now or ten years down the road, we can't do anything with it until we have this lease in place.
And I don't have a crystal ball to say what's gonna go on in the future, but after reading the letter that Levi got from BN, I'm more comfortable with, you know, sending the six hundred and get the ball rolling and, I mean, it's just, I mean, I, I can't say, you know, but I just think it's gonna work out for us in the end.
Okay, we got the motion, we got the second.
It's the first step.
Right.
It's the first step. If we don't do that one, we're not gonna get anything done.
Right.
Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? And we had that checked, so. Okay, the mural, I think, is that still on hold until the end of May with Idea Shop or?
Uh, no, it actually went out and we've, uh, it went in the banner last week. June first is the, the new deadline that we put on there and we've gotten five or six entries already, so. So I think people are interested in, and we'll keep going forward with it, so.
Okay, anything else? Moving on to eighteen eighty-one.
Just, is that information on the grill? I haven't looked recently.
Yes, it got put on, yep. There was just a misunderstanding between the Idea Shop and I, they thought I said to wait and I said, no, I was waiting until, I got all the approvals from all the groups before I put it on there, so. But it is on there now, so.
Eighteen eighty-one, is there anything else that we need to do since John's got the lease? Ashley? Okay. Petition to rezone River Walk, again, we have that going to planning and zoning.
Next week.
Okay. HBA tent contribution, I think we approved and the wire, the money's transferred then?
Almost for the wire transfer.
We just have to have it, cause the city is gonna, we decided the best way to do it was just to have the city pay for it.
Everything here, okay.
And then we reimburse it, and we just want approval to make sure for that amount that it's okay for them to do that wire reseller.
Levi made the motion, do I have a second?
Say.
Mike seconds. Any other discussion? Start with you, Paul.
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Any yes for me? New business, uh, the flooding, emergency disaster declaration approval?
Yeah, I, it was in all your packets. Steve had sent me something, oops. Steve, Steve had sent me something and told me that we need to, um, have a declaration so that we can get some money back for, cause obviously like the pool is underwater. And so in order for us to get any money for that, we need to have, we need to submit a, or declare a declaration of emergency. So he sent me an example or what Mayville had put, and so I just copied off of them and, um, we just need, I just need a motion to ha, have Terry and myself sign this today, declaring a state of emergency.
Does this take us back to March two, or is it just for this specific?
I put in March, nope. Spring, spring runoff occurring in March, April, and May of twenty twenty-two. And Steve, Steve told me as long as I had those months in it and I copied it exactly how Mayville has theirs, I, we should be good.
Almost to approve.
Make some motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds. Any, any other discussion?
John's looked at this.
I think we talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about it today.
Read it to me.
Yeah.
So that's a yes, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so let's start. Dave?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Okay, moving on to the Sanford Hospital Auxiliary, an app for a local permit.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have Dave for the motion and Levi for the second. Any discussion or any details that we need to know? Ashley?
This is something I do every year, it's just a raffle.
Okay, so, Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
And yes for me. Outdoor drinking ordinance for the patio seating assistance. What, what, what's the issue that we want to discuss?
Current issue is that we don't have anything.
Okay, have we had Sheriff Hunt weigh in on what he would prefer?
Yes, Sheriff Hunt. And JR and I talked for a little bit after our last meeting today and he was agreeable to what we, the changes and basically what it does to a current outdoor facility drinking, because the only outdoor facility drinking that we allow currently is the, the beer gardens, which is, would be like what the A and R has. And so we're just defining that there's beer gardens or patio. And you can see what's in yellow, what is the changes. The fencer buffer for the beer gardens, that would be then closed like we currently have and what we, over at the A and R, the patio would require a buffer between the patio and the unlicensed area. Could be anything, just so somebody can't cross, can't be a rope, it's gotta be, could be pots, could be, or could be a built-in like flower pots, could be a wrought iron fence, that's what Steve and I had, and JR had talked about. Then the beer gardens would be just changed to that as twenty-one and older. The patio would make the age requirements, whatever set forth in section in previous, and then hours of operation would be, for the patio would close, everything closes at one thirty, no matter what, but a patio would close an hour after the kitchen closes. And so if Goose River Brewing wanted to have the patio, they would have to have this in place, cause there isn't anything currently right now that'll allow you to have a patio.
Does there fence, just use his place for example, you put a fence, is it, does it gotta have an exit gate on it or?
Yep, and that's in here too, it has, has one exit gate. Or has to have two exit, one, the building, one exit. That can't be, is what it says, but.
But it's gotta be kept closed at all times.
So the, I guess the gate I'm struggling with, because for fire code, you know, it's just like a door, you have to be able to, to get out without having to turn a latch or anything. To me, if you have an entryway with a, you know, a premise, you know, some sort of a barrier, uh, you know, I think that that would be probably closer to what you could get a fire inspection report to do, cause it's just like the doors you have, you can't impede an exit. And that would, if you have a latch on the gate or a gate, that would be kind of restricting that, an exit.
Unless you got a gate with a type of a push bar that goes to the out, you know? That's just.
I think that having an opening that you can get back and forth, it still designates an area basically and has it approved that way.
So, but the problem with that area is that in our ordinance, I mean, I'm trying to help you so that you can get this patio open, that's why I put this forward, cause as of right now, you can't have a patio. And we had talked about this back in November, we haven't done anything, so we're getting, I'm trying to get this done and off the docket. But, you know, in our other ord, part of the ordinance, it also says that we can't have any side rooms and other things, so. I mean, the only other option, if you wanted to have a patio out there and put up a rope, kind of like they do for Hillsborough days, is you'd have to have a server out there and the bar being served out there the whole times, which I assume you wouldn't want to do that, so. When I looked at what Grand Forks and Fargo has, this is very similar, this is what Steve said is a, what we should do, we don't want, you want people coming in through the main entrance, not coming in through the patio.
No, we want both entrances to be open.
Just cause that's what you want, doesn't mean that that's what the sheriff's department or what we can do.
But now you're meddling in, in the fire inspection report, because the exits are counted as two exits. So, you know, again, there's gotta be some common sense that goes with this.
How high a fence would we be talking if he was to put a fence around his?
Just so you can't get through. I mean, that's every other bar in Fargo that I've looked at or Grand Forks has the same thing, they have a, a swinging gate that opens up from the inside.
No, not necessarily. They'll actually take parking spots out in front of certain bars at Grand Forks, for example, they'll turn that into an outdoor patio for the summertime and there's no fence around, or there's kind of a roped off pedestal type of an operation. You can go to Bonders, you can go to Barley's, you can go to any number of places up there and they do that, so.
That's not correct. Do they have an outdoor bar there too or?
No, you take your drinks out from the, the inside, the.
Can you, can it be seen physically from the, the serving area?
No, cause it's out the front door.
But can they look through the window and physically see the outside area?
Well, what's your point there? Cause I got both of my doors have windows in them and I can look out.
But you can't see the whole, you know, the ones that I had seen that have an outdoor patio that like that, they have a huge garage door that they open up, or they have large windows that they can see the patio area from the bar, or from the serving area.
Well, like I say, I've seen plenty of examples where you don't have anything and you just go across the sidewalk.
Here's the thing, we talked about this in November, you then also said you were gonna take care of this, it hasn't gotten done. So I'm bringing this to the commission to ask them what they, we should do so that you can open up your patio.
And now you're saying that I can't serve food on my patio?
I have never said you can't serve food on your patio.
So then you're just saying, you just said that I can't do anything with my patio, well, you know, this, this weekend, if it's nice in the sixties, I'm gonna serve food out there.
Well, I, yeah.
That food is fine, but if you serve drinks out there, you're breaking me.
I don't think food is in the conversation here at all.
And I agree with the, you know, having a barrier between it, but what I do disagree with is having some sort of a gate that you have to get onto the patio as well. I would prefer to have an open area where you walk through and, you know, in between the poles there, you have a restricted area, you know, it basically, that's gonna take and have some decoration.
This isn't just about you, Terry, this is about if somebody came in and wanted to do something similar. So now, does that mean that the A and R should be able to open up and have a complete second entrance into their beer gardens?
I don't know about the beer gardens.
Okay, but that's, you're.
But if they came to us and asked if they could take and do like they do up in Grand Forks where they take a parking spot out in front of their bar and want to have food and drinks out there, I would be, as a commissioner, would be for that. Again, it's all about business.
I, I personally think we need to get all these bar owners together and sit down with Steve and figure this out and, and see if, you know, Steve and maybe JR or somebody, if there's any legal, you know, because, you know, I, as a bar owner, if they're not paying attention, they don't, some of them bar owners probably don't even know this is going on, whether it be the Vets Club, they do a lot of things outside too, is this gonna cause a problem for them? I just think we should have the common courtesy to make them aware of it, whether they want to partake in that or come to it, I just think it's, just for the sake of not having to do this again, so it's, it's done, these guys, these people get in the room and they talk about what they want and as long as our attorneys and the sheriff's department's okay with it, then we, then we can review it again and go from there, but we can sit here and talk all night about what's, what's right and what's wrong, what they do in Grand Forks, well, you know, I really don't care what they do in Grand Forks, this is Hillsborough, you're at Grand Forks, you can use an example, but we don't know the specifics of what they're doing down there, at least I don't know what the specifics are. That's why I think Sheriff Hunt would be the best one to, you know, to address those things and it's only two weeks, it's been since November, so.
I don't have a problem with waiting, I'm just bringing it forward to the group to, to move forward so that we can offer this, but like I said, I did talk to Sheriff Hunt. JR was there and he was, I told him exactly what the changes were, we agreed upon it, but I just want it, that.
Well, I just think.
And this is not for bars to just open up an outside area to drink, that isn't what this for, this is for, for a bar slash restaurant to serve food out and drinks out at, on the patio.
Well, that was specifically why we brought a group of ordinance into the, you know, the licensing process.
But it's not in there for an outside facility and we, when we gave you your liquor license, we said that too, that we're not approving the outside until we get it in the ordinance.
But it's still in the building footprint, the patio, all that patio space is a footprint.
But it wasn't approved for you to serve beer out there and food.
I, well, I think that we should get together, cause like I say, there's so many mitigating factors here too, it's just like COVID, who'd ever thought that you, you know, having outside areas to take and eat and drink would be an important part of it and all the things that the pandemic has done to us. And again, uh, you know, we want to take and have a pro-business approach to this and I think outdoor eating and, and having drinking, I'm more concerned. outdoor eating and, and having drinking, I'm more concerned about what the process would be for, if you do have drinks out there, no glass, if it's just aluminum, you know, all those types of things, I think have to be presented to Sheriff Hunt, he's the one that enforces it, and, you know, we kinda go from there, but I agree that there needs to be, and it's not a beer garden, because a beer garden's an eight-foot fence, and it's outdoors, whereas this is a patio, and people like to sit out, outdoors, drink and, and enjoy a meal, so.
I, I want you to get your business going, let's get it figured out, but right now, I'd like some clarification on what he can do with his patio, until we figure it out, so he knows, so. Can he do anything on there, he can serve food on there, of course, but can he, can he serve alcohol on there until the fig, we get it figured out? Because he's gonna need to know that, so there's no questions in the.
I'm gonna refer to JR and John.
Deputy May has an input?
And the deputy.
Actually, I'd get the, their side of view of things, I'd have to see back to the liquor license to see how it was approved, does become a question, and what was approved as the blueprint. If it was definitely off property, we'd be having issues here, but the beer garden's also an A and R's property, that's, we just want to work.
Well, the brew pub has, you know, we approved the brew pub, is what it was, and again, that does include the footprint of the whole building, correct? John?
I honestly don't remember when the license was presented, if, if the outside was included for the licensing, but I, I think that for everyone's well-being, assuming, I hope Steve Hunt isn't gonna be on vacation soon, that tomorrow or the next day, if you can get over and, and work with Steve and get things that are figured out, so he's happy with it and you are, that's what we should do.
Well, I wanted to take and visit with him, but, but the flooding, I didn't wanna be a pest either, so taking time out of his flood.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, it's, he's been a little busy.
Yep.
So, if you put up a temporary barricade, just until it gets figured out, my question is, could you serve alcohol? You know, just a temporary fence?
Well, I think that that would be what I'd like to see, again, and I have plans for putting up a structure, but I'll probably bring a facade grant request to the commission meeting, the next meeting, to take and say, oh, I'm gonna do that, and the cost for it, so, that would help clarify it. But again, I don't plan on having a swinging door that goes back and forth, just an opening with a, an enclosure between the poles out in front and on the west side.
Well, I guess until the.
Why don't we look at that, what you're gonna do?
Yep.
And then we'll go from there, and maybe we can keep our eyes open, and when you're driving through Fargo, or you go out to eat, maybe you can look and see what, what's out there.
Well, I, like I said, I've, I've seen plenty of examples where there's outdoors, and I've seen where there's patios that just have, you know, a wooden rail fence that goes around it, I've seen all kinds of things, but it, again, now I just wanna get an answer, because if it's in the sixties and people are sitting out there with a rope barrier this next weekend, is that gonna suffice until we actually get a answer and get everything nailed down?
That was my question.
Yeah, I think the answer is talk to Sheriff Hunt.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's not a, a reason not to get the ordinance done, or changed, but, but, you know, for now, talk to Sheriff Hunt and see what he says. That's who we need to rely on, so.
One, the other question now, that you brought up, Terry, is if the footprint was in on the brew pub, or is the brew pub part of it open?
What do you mean, open?
Are, isn't the brew part, part of it, you brewing your own beer?
Yeah, and the brewery in the back.
Is it up and running, and you're selling that beer out there?
No, I don't have it set up yet.
So then are you a bar or a brew pub right now?
Well.
That's a question.
It's, it's gonna be a brew pub, I can't get the construction done any faster, leave I M E Gs.
But Terry, here's the thing, we talked about this back in November, before, we tried to get you guys, we asked you to do it, it wasn't getting done, it's one of the things that's on the list, we need to get it done, so that summer's coming and that you could have it open. That's what I was looking out for was.
Yep, and I had the discussion way back, probably four or five months ago, with Steve, brought him over, told him what the operation was gonna be like, and where the three-foot behind the bar was the restricted area, had to be twenty-one and above, so we got signs up to do that. We talked about a rope along the patio, but again, it's been a long time since we had that conversation, and I was gonna get ahold of him, since we had the soft opening yesterday, but again, with the flooding and stuff, I didn't wanna take and be a bother, try to take and get ahold of him, but I will reach out to him this week and see what he says. And he almost has to walk through and take a look at it too, so. Anything else, we'll table it till the next commission meeting? Okay, moving on to the citizens that wanna address the commission.
We're looking at each other, I'll go first.
Yeah, ladies first.
I'm no lady, I'm Mary Lou Pearson, if you don't know me, and I, our driveway is the western edge of the city limits of Hillsborough. We have a problem, I hope you can help us with. I drew the short straw this time, Bruce was here in twenty nineteen, when John Lowry was here, and we had some concerns about our property and Riverwalk, and one of the things was drainage, and John Lowry assured us that, no problem, we're not gonna drain on you, and it's not true. They're draining water on us, and I'm talking about before all this rain, and we were basically dealing with snowmelt. They have a ditch that runs east-west of the, but it's west of Ninth Street Northwest, which is the double street coming into the development, on the west side of the FSA agency. And they're trying to push water uphill, they're trying to drain it west, and our driveway's the barrier, and our driveway is gonna collapse, because it's, the water just sits there, because, I don't know if you've driven out west, but at the end of our driveway, there was a fire hydrant put in last summer, when they were doing that construction, and the fire hydrant's been underwater the whole time. I don't think the fire department's gonna like that, if they have to answer a fire, but it's not drained, the water just stands there. The water comes from the west, and then it stops at our driveway, and then it comes up our driveway, I talked to Pat Mueller in twenty sixteen, and asked him to please fix that culvert, and sure, drainage, that's no problem, we'll do it, and it hasn't been done yet. The other problem with the actual development is the edge of the lake, that's starting to be built, it's, it's blocking all the rest of the water from going east to the river, because there's, I don't know if you've been out there, but there's a rise on the edge of the lake, and the lake isn't done, but as the lake gets done and goes farther north, none of the water from our property is gonna be able to go east, it's gonna stay there, and the other concern is property value, and our property's not gonna be worth much when all our trees are dead, because they drown from all the water, and our driveway washes out, it's the only way to get in and out of our property, so, can you help me?
Are you talking about the county ditch now, on County Road eleven? That's the one you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about our driveway acting as a levee.
Right, but you're talking about the ditch, the County Road eleven ditch, right?
Right, and it doesn't drain to the east.
The corner of her driveways where the fire hydrants belong.
And then, I know that the lake will have an outlet to the river, so that, when it gets too high, it will flow to the east to the river.
But the lip of the, of the lake right now is above the level of the field to the west, so that water that's on that field that's trying to go east, can't go there in the part of the lake that's already started, I assume that's what that is.
So you're saying the farmland in between the development and your, your, your farmstead is, that's the issue, that it, that's where the lake is causing the problem, because it can't go east right now?
It's going west, it can't go uphill, it gets to our place and just accumulates. And drainage was not gonna be a problem, John Lowry said so, but we haven't even, we haven't even gotten to the point where all the lots start getting built up. So, the reason I'm bringing it up now is because it seems like somebody's hell-bent on putting an apartment building out there, and that was another issue that was brought up, we don't want neighbors, we live in a rural area, we're not taxpayers in Hillsborough, we live in the county, and John Lowry assured us.
And that's, that's the problem that we have right now, is you're not a part of the city.
Oh.
But you're asking the city to help.
Yeah, but I'm extraterritorial zone, right? When the city wants to tell me what to do.
Are they within half a mile?
We always were, right, John? We always were in the extraterritorial zone, right? Since nineteen ninety-one, when we talked about this? Doesn't matter, we are, we are, we are, we are now, for sure, and, because the development's all around us, you know, not yet, but John Lowry assured us that the only part that was gonna be developed was north of Ag Country and FSA. Well, that's not quite true, because they added those commercial lots.
Well, there's.
County eleven, which is fine.
I think they were always there, weren't they? The commercial.
In the master plan, in the master plan, yeah, but now, before anything's built, somebody wants to change the zoning?
Well, we do that, we do that all the time.
Change it from commercial to?
We change zoning.
I know, we do that all the time, but here's the question, this isn't the issue I wanted to bring up, because they're gonna do whatever they want, you're gonna do whatever you want, but here's my issue. So, there's all that residentially zoned area north of Farm Credit and FSA that isn't sold, so, put the apartment building in the residentially zoned area, because the next thing you're gonna say is, well, now we don't have any commercial lots by County eleven.
I hope we have that problem.
What's that?
I said, I hope we have that problem, somebody.
Well, I guess we'll never know if they build apartment buildings there, and I think you brought up at the last meeting, how, how is this conducive to the beautiful lake you're blocking with a three-story apartment building?
Well, I would like to see it somewhere else too, but it's obviously, the, the buyer and the owner selling are the ones that make that decision, if the planning and zoning committee approve of the rezoning.
Right, but wasn't the zoning already approved, commercial?
Yeah, it's, it's commercial, it has to be changed.
So then, the week after that, when they decide, we got a buyer, and we, oh, we wanna put something else there, let's change the zoning again, before they even build anything? They don't even wanna, it was master planned, read their website, it's master planned, well, I guess not.
Well, things, things do change, and that's why we.
But that is, that is, I totally get that, and it's not my line, but I can do what I want with it, but I wanna protect my own property, our property, and they can't drain on us, can they?
Can you share some pictures with me, or with the people, all this, because I'm proving we've got pictures of all this problem?
Sure.
Just a sec, can you?
Sure. Right now?
And next, next Monday, he's gonna be here.
Who's gonna be here?
John Lowry.
Oh, didn't know that.
Well, it's at the planning and zoning meeting, so that's my concern, so at five-thirty next Monday, there will be a presentation about what the apartment project is gonna look like, the planning and zoning, and requesting a change of zoning for that, but there's also an interest on Mike and his team's part, to find out exactly what the project's gonna look like, and, oh, that has to be pre-approved before, you know, we get into it, so that'll all play into the planning and zoning side of the house. So if you'd like to attend, that would be a good time to do it.
It'd be nice if you did send some pictures, so that, send them to Ashley, and she can share them with us, and she can share them with John.
Yeah, and drive on out, but be careful when you come in the driveway, because you might sink, okay?
Can anybody?
But am I talking to the right people? I mean, is this the way to go about it?
Can anybody here tell me which way, besides west, the water's supposed to run on that corner by your mailbox?
The corner by the?
By your mailbox, where that fire hydrant's underwater?
It's supposed to go west, uphill?
No, no, that's, I said, besides west.
Oh, it's gotta go east.
Okay, that's what, that's what my question.
Oh, it's gotta go east, there used to be a ditch there, but it kinda got filled in last summer with all the construction, and that's why I thought, well, we got plenty of time, it's not ready, it's not ready to be built on, because they didn't put the streets in yet.
Can the county take and dredge that down a little bit, to get it to flow east?
County's not in the ditch cleaning business.
No, but it's along their highway.
Can you get them to not drain it west? Stop draining it west?
I can't get them to do anything.
Terry, I think, I think it needs to be sent to Lowry and have him address it.
Okay.
Any, I mean, it's still, there's still a warranty on all the work that's gone out, out there, and they should be aware of it, and they should go out and check to see what's going on out there.
And I'll be at Mike's meeting next Monday too, so I'll make sure to at least address it, if you're not there, have John talk about it, and then we can kinda go.
They contacted me today, and there'll be a representative from Lowry coming up here, I don't know if this week or next week, and we're gonna do a walkthrough, and I can make sure that he sees what's going on.
Perfect, thanks, guys, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Chuck?
Can't have a meeting without somebody. Quick question, the one house that you guys are negotiating, doing something with over there, is that the old Glum's Root House?
Yes, that's the evic, that's the eviction. That's the eviction one.
Okay, that, that, that's all good and fine, but you're talking about the thousand dollars a day and whatever, and I'm just bringing this up for, as the mayor would say, to throw it in there, but that, they don't own that place, the management company looks after it, so who are you sending the bill to? You got their name?
We're not at that point yet, we're not at that point, but, yes.
It don't matter to me, I, I just, I just know that that's, because I had dealings on, on the property, so whatever.
But it goes to whoever the registered property owner is.
Okay.
Because we had sent the letter to the registered property.
So they, they would be aware of it, rather than saying, sending it to Steve, okay. Quick question, and I don't really doubt it to me, too much other than the fact, the tent that the city agreed to throw some money into with the other HBA, whatever, who's gonna be responsible for it? Where is it gonna be kept? Who can all use it?
That motion was made last, last meeting, that it would be kept with the city, and the city would insure it, and we hadn't at that point decided who all would use it, other than those that had purchased it.
Shouldn't you decide, shouldn't you decide who can use it?
We will at some point, yes.
So, right at this point, anybody can come and say, I'd like to, and it'll be asked, and then debated at that point?
Probably, we, we'll determine at that point, once we have it, and what, and everything is in place, well, at that time, we'll determine who's gonna use it and who's not, and at that time, you can have your input, and, well, you can have your input now, if you want, but we haven't really decided.
I'm just asking the question, you know, every once in a while, five thousand dollars gets spent here with snapping your fingers, you know, who's responsible for it, and what's gonna be the end, you know, can John Doe or Don and Brandon come up here and borrow it? You know, there's things that should get done, there's gotta be a little more planning done on a lot of these things, than just make a motion to spend money and buy something, and, oh my God, now we gotta do something else with it, but just food for thought. The other thing was, and, about ten days ago, there was a county hazarded mitigation meeting that concerned FEMA, concerned emergencies around here, they're gonna have more meetings in the future, and I certainly hope people attend, because people noticed that they weren't there at this meeting that should've been there. It just so happened, I happened to be at the meeting with some other people, and, I realize everybody's busy, but the root of all evil was, the money that's gonna come from FEMA is gonna be based on the number of people and the representation from the town, in the county they come from, so we gotta start keeping our eyes open, and, and anybody wants to further talk about this after the meeting, that's all I have. That's all I got to say.
What meeting did you say that was?
What's that?
What meeting did you say was?
It was April nineteenth, seven o'clock at the courthouse, it was in the banner, I think, two or three weeks in a row. If I, I don't know, I don't know if the city was notified of it. I, I do know they mentioned three or four times, is the mayor here from this town or that town and whatever? Uh, and I'm not laying it on the mayor, because, uh, thanks to somebody, we were represented there by the city council, but, uh, it is, you know, something that everybody should have their fingers in when it comes to emergency management, uh. Uh, the government, as they said, didn't even know we had a pipeline five miles east of town. Be nice thing if that blew up and nobody knew about it, but whatever. Anyway, uh.
But just to make a comment though, Chuck, that Sheriff Hunt is also the emergency manager for Trail County.
He was there.
Yep, and, uh, so we kinda count on him and we've op, we've offered.
Yeah, he is, but he said that he was gonna let me know and he, I, well, we were.
All I say, Chuck, Chuck, we've, we've attended that, we've, I've attended many of those and we were always informed that it's going on and I, I had no idea.
Well, I have no idea, they didn't, they didn't even bring up, you know, the city workers or anything about that, it was, uh, it's just something that, uh, I believe in June or July, the next meeting's coming up, and, uh, guys, they want your input.
Yeah, and we did offer in past years to take and do tabletops or like a derailment with hazardous materials and stuff like that. But he's pretty darn busy and, you know, I don't have that really, well, we got, uh, you know, Jim over here too, he does a lot of the, uh, the announcing and stuff for the, uh, emergency side of the house there, so.
And the last time it was done, I'm just gonna interrupt, it was five years ago.
It's a five-year plan, Terry.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and Mr. Murphy was there.
Yeah.
So, uh.
So, but, yeah, they just want as many bodies with brains as they can get there to help.
And the last one that we offered to do with him was a flood tabletop, and it was last year, no, the year before.
Well, this concerned airports, dams, uh, rivers, uh, uh, pipelines, the schools, you name it, so.
Yeah, I did emergency management for a while, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, well, just so, uh, you know, uh, very few people apparently were aware of it and, uh, I just wanted to make sure that I rub somebody's ears now tonight that.
Can you take and make sure that we're on the trap line there, Jim, that we get the notification?
Do that.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you, Chuck. Anybody else?
Senator Cole, I can say, 'cause I know the law, so.
Well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, second? We got a second, word adjourned.
Hi, John.